And U-Force, so more of a summer school programming. So at East Ridge, we'll have our middle school students. And then at Cog Grove and Red Rock and Gray Cloud, we will have the younger elementary students. So again, all of those meals will be free to all children. So our first slide here is our lunch participation. So last school year, we were doing extremely well and actually above our goals. We were on cue to make over $10 million, which is the highest we've ever would have had for a year end. But then COVID happened. So then you see our nice green line that dramatically plummeted. And this is because, of course, kids were at home. We stopped going to school. And then we had to quickly flip program programming from in-person to quickly serving the community through curbside. So we had a little bump up when we started curbside and we got that rolling. But this school year, you can see, we are dramatically much slower than we typically would be. So we started off pretty slow. And then in December, when we went to distance learning, we saw an uptick of families coming in for curbside meals. And then as the school years, we started getting kids slowly back in increments, you can start to see that we are starting our, with the red graph there, that we're starting to rebound. And actually, this last month was very good for us, and I think we'll finish off pretty well. All right. And then breakfast. So this graph is a little misleading, just because you see a giant uptick in December, but it's also because of the scale, you know, that I used on the left-hand side. But we, again, it's showing breakfast, we've always been pretty low or lower compared to lunch. But as we've seen through this pandemic, we've actually started to see an increase in breakfast participation for multiple reasons, because it's free, but also because we're starting to see a lot of principals working with us and having classroom delivery, which is great, or having kids all come down to a cafeteria to eat, or having to grab and go back to the classroom. So we thank those principals for their support, for sure, on that as well. So for December alone, we did over 70,000 meals served to the community or kids. So that's been a pretty, it's pretty amazing. Now we're moving on to à la carte. As you can see as well in years past, we've been around the $12,000 a day mark for à la carte sales. So of course, when COVID happened again, you saw the plummet because we are not selling à la carte to people in curbside or, you know, that part. So it dramatically went to zero. So when we're looking at $12,000 a day, or 12.5, it could, it was a loss of $2 million. I mean, if we kept going, it would have been about $2 million in revenue. So that was kind of a challenge. This year, you see, it's really, really low, and there's a couple of reasons for that. Our main vendor for snacks went out of business once COVID hit. So we did not get the variety that we used to have. And then we had to really rely on our main distributor, Upper Lakes Foods. And so they do not have nearly the variety that our past vendor had. So that's part of it, but also the hybrid piece. Secondaries being Monday through Thursday, with flex Fridays or shortened days where a lot of the seniors left, you know, for lunch. So there's a few reasons why we are seeing the much lower daily sales compared to years So our 21, 22 budget assumptions, as again, as I stated, all meals will be free next school year through June of 2022. So that's very exciting for families. À la carte revenue, we're seeing a decrease compared to past years, so you will see that. And again, it has to do with the availability of product. It has to do with just being able to get product in general. And then our, you know, basically the one company going out of business, which really cost us all districts in the area. The other thing we're assuming is a food cost increase of 2%. Now, when we first did this presentation or worked on the budget, it seems pretty low now because we didn't have the whole gas crisis, you know, down south, product issues, labor shortages. So we're starting to see a lot more, that could be very fluid, or we could see an uptick in that. So we will be watching that number very, very closely this coming school year and over the summer. And then inflationary wage and salary increases, which is usual of our budget, an increase in benefit expenditures, and then chargebacks to the district, which will be 1.3 million. So that's based on a 14.9% indirect cost rate, which is the highest we've ever seen it. So that's where we're going with chargebacks. So as you can see with the detailed revenue summary, when we looked at the proposed versus adjusted, this was dramatically different. And again, because the pandemic hit. Now, this coming school year, we're expecting up in everything except for à la, as I keep saying, à la, we're expecting to be lower than normal. So our total revenue will be $11.8 million, which again, is definitely the highest we've ever seen. And we're contributing this to all the free meals for students. And we're hoping and expecting more kids to be eating with us as we go and getting back to normal menus, which I do believe will be helpful as well. Expenditures, again, same scenario. So with expenditures, we're seeing an increase across the board on everything. I do want to note a couple of things, that equipment and supplies, we've really idled back on what we're spending, and it's just buying things that we absolutely need, not what we want. We didn't get much for new equipment at all. We have just basically gone to the point of just maintaining or repairing equipment. So we've really been trying to be good stewards of our dollars because we know it's been a little challenging for we, as you'll see with our finances, this year. So our nutrition services fund balance, so when we're looking at spring of 1920 school year, we are estimating about a drop of $400,000 of a loss. And just to kind of explain some things, when the pandemic hit, we ended up furloughing staff or still paying them even though they weren't working. So we have about 140 employees. And then when April 2020 hit, we furloughed everyone but 25 employees. And we kept the employees, our managers, assistant managers, the people who, you know, make more money and they have benefits. So that was more of an expense as well. The other thing is we were changing our operations. So I'm sure as you know in schools, if you eat school lunch with us, that we had to start wrapping everything and packaging everything. And when you do that, it actually increases your labor costs because it takes more time to wrap all those things. Also, the paper costs. So we did see some price gouging on paper, but we could do what we could, what we could do. And then the other thing is offer versus serve. So it's something that, so we offer five different components for our meal. So usually, kids could decide to take three out of those five. But when you're doing curbside, we don't have the opportunity to have kids not select two food components. So again, everyone's getting the full meal where offer versus serve kind of helps with waste and, and financials. But next year, we're seeing a good uptick. So our revenue minus expenditures, we are assuming a $1.1 million surplus in our budget for next year. And a lot of that is, again, because of the free meals. I think we're going to do very well from that perspective. And then also, our projected fund balance total will then move to $1.7 million. Any questions? Does anybody have any questions?
My only question, first of all, thank you, and thank you to the entire Nutrition Services staff because this is, I don't want to say unprecedented times, but apparently it's what it is, right? And the work they've done this year has been just outstanding. One of the questions I had was, are there any impediments that you see to achieving what you've laid out in your budget for next year?
Good question. I think our biggest concern is staffing, I will say is number one. We've lost about 30 employees, which is a lot. And then when we put on free meals for everyone, I feel that we're going to end up doing more meals than even pre-pandemic. So I guess our biggest fear right now is staffing and getting people hired. And it's been kind of slow with getting people back or hired. We've, we've recalled all employees this April, so everyone was back who wanted to come back. And now we're in the process of hiring, and it's been pretty slow. But even today, I got two old employees back, so I feel there's maybe some glimmer of hope and then a few externals. But if we can get staffing in check, it will be great. But it's just that fear of the unknown.
Bobby Joe, just to make it clear for the, the community too, is that because food service is a self-sustaining budget, there were a number of furloughs that had to occur in order to meet the budget, which is why when we talk about bringing employees back is some had to find other work. And so right now, that is our struggle.
Yes, we saw a lot of employees, which of course, when you're off for a year, you will need to find employment, and a lot with children, you know, taking care of their children during this too, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, on to 9.0 discussion items. We don't have any today. So then 10.0, our action items. First one is 10.1, and that is approval of changes to proposed policies, and that will be done by Superintendent Julie Nielsen.
Thank you. This evening, we bring back for the second time after receiving public comment, or I should say, the opportunity for comment around the policies. We are at the point in reviewing policies in the 500 series as well as the 900 series, three policies, policies in the 900 series. And so this evening, with your board packets, we are asking for approval of those recommended changes to those policies.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Sharon. Any discussion, questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 10.2, approval of release of long-term substitute teaching contract, and that will be presented by Kevin Witherspoon.
Director of Food and Research.
Good evening. In compliance with Minnesota state statutes, we are required to terminate the teaching contracts of our long-term substitutes. So a long-term substitute by definition is one who has worked all or part of the school year replacing a specific teacher who has return rights to his or her position. The contracts of the long-term substitutes must be terminated. Failure to terminate these contracts would result in the district allocating two teachers in each affected position as the regular teachers exercise their contractual rights to come back. The administration recommends approval of this resolution.
Okay, whereas M.S. dot 122A point 44 provides that substitute teaching employment can be terminated at the end of the 2020, 2021 school year, and that said employment not be renewed for the 2021, 2022 school year. Can I have a motion? Motion by Louise, seconded by Simi. Any discussion? No, this is a roll call vote. Dana, can you call the roll?
Melinda Dolez. Louise Hines.
Yes.
Simi Petnaik.
Yes.
Pat Driscoll.
Yes.
Sharon Van Leer.
Yes.
Katie Schwartz.
Yes.
Tracy Burnett is absent.
Motion passes. Oh, you're on the next one, aren't you? I was going to say, thank you. 10.3, approval of wages and benefits for kids club supervisors, and Kevin Witherspoon.
Thank you. So I'm here tonight for approval of the wages and benefits of the kids club supervisors, International Union of Operating Engineers Local 70. Negotiations towards a two-year agreement, which would be effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022. The members of the bargaining unit approved the tentative agreement on April 2021. And we've had to work through some things, so I'm bringing to the board now. The economic costing, increase in wages of 2.03% for the 2021 school year and a 7.16% for the 2122 school year. I'll get into some more specifics when I'm done. No retroactive, no retroactivity on base wages. New wages rates are effective January 1st, 2021. There was a freeze in longevity for both years of the contract. The wages include a one-time gross lump sum payment of $500 for each actively employed kids club supervisor at the time the contract is, is approved by the board. And then for insurance, increase, increase, insurance, 2.5% in both years, 2021 and 2022. Increase in the family VIBA to $102, $121 monthly, which equals $1,226.52 annually to equal the single plan. Dental contribution of $20 per month beginning January 1st, 2021, and then an increase in TSA contributions from $1,000 to $1,100. Administration recommends approval of this proposal. I did want to also just include that although the, the year two, 7.16% seems high, there was no retro pay on wages, which would equal about a 1%, so that provided them with the opportunity to add that to year two. And then additionally, with longevity frozen for both years, that gave them a lot more leeway to have a higher percentage on year two. That's how we could afford it. Thinking of it, if you want to think of the longevity piece, think of it as if you froze your steps for teachers, I think is a great way to, a great analogy, so.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Melinda, seconded by Simi? Or Louise, I'm sorry. Without, with mass, I can't see much. First by Melinda, second by Louise. Any questions? Okay, all the, yep.
So the year one, review. Like to go back on January 1st.
Correct.
Okay. And then the year two, review is over for July 1st.
July 1st.
Okay.
Anyone else? Well, that's what I'm going to say. I'm trying to blank. I apologize. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
It's been a really long day today. Okay, 10.4, approval of revised 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan. That will be presented by Dan Pye and Director of Finance and Operations.
Good evening, now. Joe Schwartz, board members. Superintendent Nielsen, student board members. Yeah, I have the next four or five, I don't know. I'm up here for a while, so. First item is really somewhat of some, it's kind of a housekeeping thing. So last July, the school board approved a long-term facility maintenance plan, and these, these plans run for 10 years. So every July, we'll, we'll ask for approval, another 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. It's like a, it's a rolling plan, and then it's financed through what's called page-to-go levy, which is a straight levy, and then we use two-year LTFM bonds to finance the other half of it. So as we did our bids this year, they came in, we're not quite sure why, but they came in under mainly on roofing projects and parking lot projects. So as we redid our budget, we were able to move projects into next year, and we talked to MDE, Department of Education, and they suggested that we revise the plan. So this is last year's plan you're revising. We'll come back in July with the new plan. Along with revising the expense plan, we're also revising the revenue plan, and this is mainly to submit this to MDE so they can put the proper levy into the system in the So we're recommending that you approve the revised 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan before we have submitted to MDE.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Pat. Any questions for Dan? Can we with, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And 10.5, approval of 2020, 21 revised budget, and Dan will just say where he is.
Good evening again, thank you. I did, I did promise you a story, Sharon, so I'll tell you a quick story, see if I can relate it to the budget. So I often golf on Sunday mornings with, with probably usually the same guys I golf with, and we set a tee time and we meet. And the other day, we were sitting there, and the fourth guy wasn't showing up, and he's never late. And we go down to the box, and we're almost walking away, and then he runs up and he joins us, and we said, why are you so late? And he goes, well, this morning, my wife was giving me a really hard time about golfing instead of going to church. So I flipped a coin on it. I said to him, well, so what? Why you, why still, why are you late then? And he said, well, I had to flip it 26 times. People ask why it takes so long to do the budget. We flip a lot of coins. It's three months of flipping coins. This budget that we presented last period, last board meeting is our revised budget. So we, every year, we revise the current budget, and then we'll bring you the new budget at the next board meeting to be approved by the end of June. So we pretty much went through everything last time. Gave you an opportunity to look at it, ask questions, gave us an opportunity to make sure all the numbers were where we want them to be over the last two weeks. And this is what, and this week, we're just asking you to approve it. And one reason we revised the budget is because we have a better idea of what our student count is. We have to change our, our EDM numbers, and especially this year, when we dropped about 400 or so students between what the budget was and what we actually are going to have this year. Then, of course, we had some extra revenues too from federal dollars. Now, those revenues could not be used to supply expenses, but they do have to go in as revenues and also the extra expenses, so. We did present the general fund budget as probably about a $3 million improvement over the, over the preliminary budget that we presented last June. And with that, I asked for an approval of the revised budget, which overall shows revenues of $309,840,000 and expenses of $320,982,000. And in the general fund, it shows revenues of $262,900,000, $262,900,000, and expenditures of $266,400, $500,000. So we're seeing a drop in our fund balance, and we had projected 6.7 million, but the drop is about 3.5 million. Entertain any questions?
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Simi. Any questions for Dan on the revised budget? We're seeing, ah, Simi? That's okay.
So does it take into account all of the federal dollars that we received over the past year? Or all of the extra, all the COVID dollars that SRA, all that stuff?
Yeah, well, we put in what we received in the 2021 school year. Mainly, they were Corona relief fund dollars, and those are dollars that had to be spent by December 31st of 2020. And we received a $4.8 million there, but it had to be spent on new things or things related to COVID, obviously. A lot of PPE, a lot of safety measures, some extra prep time for teachers and things like that. And then the county had money left over, so they, they awarded us $1.2 million, which had to be sent by December 31st also. So it was about $6 million came in there. The rest of the SRA dollars that have been coming in, as you hear the state talking about, those, we have more time to spend those, so we budget for them and, and are looking for them, but they have not been recognized yet. And there was a corresponding expense to all of those revenues too.
Any other questions for Dan? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And 10.6, approval of long-range facilities guiding change document that will be presented by Dan Pye and Director of Finance and Operations, as well as Christine Schaefer, Assistant Superintendent.
As you recall, we went over this last board meeting, and Christine will walk you through what we're asking you to approve tonight.
All right, so as you recall, at our last board meeting on May 6th, we reviewed our guiding change document. And so at this time, we're, we're asking for any questions that you might have, any additions or edits. And I know, Louise, you had one.
I do. So there's discussion in here about both aesthetics and function. I would like to be sure that somewhere in here, it talks about function being the priority.
So in the unacceptable means, that we would prioritize functional space over athletics?
Yes, I know that has to be accepted and phrased in the not.
Yes.
So maybe it's that we do not prioritize aesthetics over function.
I said athletics. Can I have my mask on? I said athletics. Would that clarify what you meant?
Yes.
If we add that to the not how?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you just remind me how different this is from the plan that was approved by the school board two years ago?
Yes, that's a good question. The majority of this is the exact same, except for under the current reality, number seven and number eight. Number seven is transportation space is currently not adequate for the number of buses and needs of transportation. That was added, and that is a need. And also, increased needs for additional space at South Washington Alternative High School. I think that was implied, but we really wanted to call that out as we really do need additional space for alternative high school students. The rest is the same.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve with the one adjustment to the not how, correct?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Louise. Last chance for questions, Simi? Just kidding. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, 10.8, wait, right? Nope, I missed one. I'm sorry. 10.7 is approval of resolution authorizing inclusion of Northeast Metro Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Projects, and that will be presented by Dan Pye.
Hello again. As you know, we are at South Washington Schools as a member of intermediate District 916. Intermediate districts are eligible for long-term facility maintenance through the LTFM process administered by the Minnesota Department of Education. However, intermediate is a collection of other districts, so for them to certify a levy for long-term facility maintenance, they must get the approval of all the districts in the intermediate district. So they ask us, each of us in May, to bring this to the board, to have this resolution passed so that they can put their plan together and submit their plan in July like we will submit our plan also. Their levy is not nearly as high as ours for LTFM. It's only $142,000. We would levy our portion of that, and since we're basically, we are the largest We would levy our portion of that, and since we're basically, we are the largest district, obviously, and probably the second-largest district is about half our size, so we generally pay about 15 to 16% of all the expenses or levies for the thing. So, we'd be levying about 10 to 15% of that for long-term facility maintenance. So, they have to have this resolution passed for them to submit their plan, and they can collect on that. And the reason is, is that they would, they'd be able to, you know, obviously, keep up their buildings, of which the district is a part owner, actually, and also keep them safe using the health and safety dollars that they're allocated.
Okay, so, this is a resolution approving Northeast Metropolitan Intermediate School District Number 916's long-term facility maintenance budget and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance and revenue. Can I get a motion to approve? Move by Simi, seconded by Louise. Do we need a roll call, Dana? Okay, roll call vote.
Melinda Dolez. Louise Hines. Simi Petnaik. Pat Driscoll.
Yes.
Sharon Van Leer.
Yes.
Katie Schwartz.
Yes.
Tracy Burnett is absent.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Now, we're on to ten point eight. This was the agenda item we added at the beginning of our board meeting, and it is for the approval of unrequested leave of absence, and it will be presented by Kevin Witherspoon, Director of Human Resources.
Good evening again. So, I'm here tonight to bring a resolution placing continuing contract teachers on unrequested leave of absence. Encloses the resolution to provide notice of intent to place continuing contract teachers on unrequested leave of absence effective with the end of the current school year. I am recommending your approval of this resolution. The timing of the ULA process requires that a resolution proposing placing teachers on ULA be passed in late May. Teachers will have the opportunity to request a hearing over the proposed placement on unrequested leave. Any hearings will be held in June, and then the board will, this will allow the board to meet for one last time in June to make a final resolution. And then, by state statute, it has to be done by July 1st, and so that's why we needed to do the timing in May and then June to allow for the 14 days to, for a hearing. I wanted to tell you a little bit about the process, and so we initially started out with 59 teachers for a proposed ULA list, with lots of collaboration with principals, and I'd like to thank Andre Helgeson and the Human Resources Department, who really worked very hard trying to find positions and how we can work things around so we would, would have to place the least amount of teachers on ULA as possible. We then had a voluntary round of bidding, two round, a voluntary round, and then two rounds of regular bidding, and then we placed teachers. So, it was a lot of, a lot of hours went into planning, and so I want to, we initially started with 59, and we are now down to 9.2 FTE for ULA, so we've really, worked really hard. And I'd also like to thank Marty Fridgen and the Transfer Committee. So, it's a joint effort between myself, Andre Helgeson, Christine Schaefer, Nathan McGuire, Lisa Lannick, and Marty, and we together make decisions about the transfer, transfer committee. And it's just, it's very collaborative, and we work very well together, and so I just want to thank them for their collaborative efforts as well. Any questions for me before?
No questions? Okay. Well, then, this is a resolution, so be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 833, South Washington County, as follows. That it is proposed that teachers be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits, effective at the end of the 2021 school year on June 30, 2021. Pursuant to M.S. 122A dot 40 subdivision 10, the collective bargaining agreement with United Teachers of South Washington County and the memorandum of agreement between the district and UTSWC titled Article 9, Unrequested Leave of Absence. That said, proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence is not the result of the implementation of an education district agreement. That written notice be sent to said teachers regarding the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits as provided by law, and said notice shall be in substantially, substantially the following form. Can I get a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Move by Sharon, seconded by Melinda. All those in favor?
Aye.
No? Oh, roll call vote, I apologize. Are there any questions first? Okay, roll. Yeah.
Sure. That's a great question. So, teachers can remain on ULA for up to five years. That's correct. We would not be doing any hiring of people before we, these 9.2 FTEs have to be found positions within the district first before we'd hire externally, based on license, right? So, if someone on this list doesn't have a science license, but we need a science teacher, we could hire a science teacher, but we couldn't hire anyone else until...
Any other questions? Dana, can you call the roll?
Melinda Dolez. Louise Hines. Simi Petnaik. Pat Driscoll.
Yes.
Sharon Van Leer.
Yes.
Katie Schwartz.
Yes.
Tracy Burnett is absent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, 11.0, Superintendent Report.
Thank you. To start with, last evening, we celebrated our 38th Employee Recognition Banquet, and it was just an incredible evening and opportunity to celebrate our many staff members who make up the great things that we do in South Washington County schools. Last evening, we had the opportunity to recognize our all-stars, a number of staff members for years of service, as well as those individuals that were retiring from the school district. And I know that some of our board members were able to be there as well, and it was just a really wonderful evening to celebrate together. Next, a statement from Technology. For the 2021 school year, District 833 continued to use the Common Sense Media Curriculum to deliver learning around digital citizenship to our students. This was a challenging year, however, all schools were able to complete this learning by wintertime. Technology would also like to share that the district continues to meet the Children's Internet Protection Act requirement for content filtering using our firewall for students in our schools and a combination of GoGuardian and Securely for all student-issued devices while at home. And for public and community, if there are ever questions around our technology, please do not hesitate to reach out to the district office, and we can put you in touch with the correct person in our technology department. Finally, this evening, maybe afternoon, communication was sent out in regards to fall planning in our virtual learning academy. And I'd like to take just a minute to highlight the points that we know now. First of all, South Washington County Schools is committed to providing a K5 virtual learning academy. Families will be asked to complete a registration no later than mid-July. The hope is that by mid-July, we will have a clearer picture of what fall is going to look like in our classrooms. We heard from families that they wanted some idea of what in-person learning would look like. So, we will have a window of time, mid-July, where families will be able to enroll in our virtual learning academy K5. As I shared prior to registration, we would like to be able to share fall plans for in-person. Currently, the school district is waiting on recommendations and reviewing the latest state guidance to establish rules for health and safety. It was shared with the school district that we would find out shortly, and now the wording changed to in a couple of weeks. And so, we stay tuned to find that recommendation, and we will be putting into action a fall planning team to be able to take a snapshot and a look at what our district will look like. While I say what our classrooms will look like, it's important for our community to understand the decisions we make have an impact on our transportation, on our custodial staff, on what our nutrition services departments do. And so, all of those things will be factored in as we plan for fall. In addition, we want to be able to clearly share what our virtual learning academy will look like. And when I say that, we will not have all of the details, because we do not have final enrollment. And so, some of the details in terms of schedule and what student days will look like could be shared, but some of the details, the nitty-grittier details, we will need to know the number of students enrolled. Next, and this is a change from this year, students will attend the virtual learning academy with students from across the district. We know from the input we've received, in some schools, there are two students, in other schools, there are 18, and they span the grades K to 5. And so, when you have 17 students out of one elementary school, and there may be two or three students per grade, we are making the decision to have one district-wide virtual elementary school. Families choosing virtual learning academy will have flexibility to transition students back to in-person learning. And when we talk about going back to in-person learning, it would be at that school that they were originally signed, assigned. Taking into consideration, if students were set to go to Armstrong Elementary because they were on an approved IDT, or if their attendance boundary school is Middleton, that is the school they would be returning to. All students can apply for the virtual learning academy. Every student will have access to be able to apply to the academy. However, specialized programming through Nueva's Front Terrace Spanish Immersion, our multi-age and gateway programs at Valley Crossing will not be available virtually. An administrator will be hired. This past year, we had put pieces together to have administrative support for a very large elementary school, and so we will have a point person that will help work out all of the details. And next, a district planning team will work through the logistics. And again, that includes things around curriculum, working with teachers, developing sections, talking about technology, parent involvement, conferences, Picture Day, and a whole host of other details that this group will be working on. And so, I explicitly just wanted to share those key points. I think we heard from our community that sometimes there's that tendency to survey the surveys, and I do hope that our community understands that that would never be our intent, and we heard loudly that parents and families needed more time in order to make that decision. And I think we have seen throughout the year that in two weeks' time, three weeks' time, things can really change. And so, that window in July really will push up against our ability to hire staff for both the VLA and then to backfill any of those positions that will be vacated in our schools. And so, we hope that when families receive this this evening, if they do have any questions, please reach out. But right now, those are the parameters. We will continue to communicate. A question came up about will VLA be offered and sent out to all families? When we send out the communication, it will go out to all families to have that opportunity. But right now, we have targeted the communication to those families currently in VLA. Thank you.
12.0, future meeting dates. June 3rd, 2021 is our school board workshop meeting here at the District Service Center at 6:30. Then, June 17th is our school board business meeting, also here at 6:30. And with that, we are on to 13.0, adjournment. Have a good evening.
Thank you.